All right, 1:01. Everybody here? All right, welcome everybody. Good afternoon. It is 1:01 PM. At this point, we'll go ahead and call today's workshop to order. This is the Foul County Board of County Commissioners Workshop for Monday, March 4th, 2024. If you could please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in
And we also take a short moment of silence and break for a few seconds of individual prayer, reflection, and meditation. We also take this time to honor and remember first responders and the men and women in the military who keep us safe locally and protect our freedoms at home and abroad. Thank you. Welcome, everybody. Today's workshop is all about stormwater. And Richard, did you want to start and take it over? All right, thank you, sir.
Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the final workshop for the Stormwater Master Plan. I'm Richard Zion. I'm with Flagler County Engineering. I'm accompanied here today with our consultant GeoCentech consultants or GeoCentech consultants who performed the study for us. The representative is Mark Eller, and he'll be walking us through the program and giving us the presentation which outlines our scope, their findings for the study from the report and recommendations for how we'd like to proceed forward. And with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Eller.
Thanks, Richard, and thank you, Commission, for having me back. I think it was last, early last fall when we did a preliminary presentation. Some of the results were back here to finalize things and give you a report. The goals we have for the meeting this morning are to present the final Stormwater Master Plan. We were close in a lot of ways back in the fall, but now is to present the final final and really focus on review of stormwater operations and maintenance and also the prioritized projects that are recommended for capital improvements. Also, a little bit discussing some funding options and kind of planning that idea in everybody's heads as far as moving forward with paying for the the recommendations for the master plan and then review and discuss the final recommendations and then the next steps to implement after the conclusion of this study. Just as a recap, as we've talked about before, when we talk about stormwater, we talk about a lot of different things and a lot of different things that the county has to address on a daily basis. So we have kind of covered all the bases with this particular plan and looking at all those aspects. Now, that included starting, looking at the program, how the county actually does it, their staff, equipment, that they maintain things every day, the program, the work that Richard and others do. Looked at the code and development review, look for enhancements there, really took a close look at the O and M program, the Operations Maintenance Program, which maintains the stormwater infrastructure. Did a bit with helping them, the county, with inventory, but really focusing also on flood assessment, water quality and resilience, which are the kind of the big three things that we look at these days with regard to stormwater. Now, a lot of that culminated into some recommendations for projects and mostly capital improvement projects, turn the dirt type projects that will help improve conditions in the county. And we'll talk about that a little bit. We were able to look and identify some candidates or targets for potential funding, some ideas that may be brought in for either internal or external funding. We'll talk about that a bit. And then one thing that also is a reminder that kicked off right at the same time as we're doing this project is the state came in and let Flagler County know that they would be part of the NPDS, National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System Permit. Basically, the state's stormwater permit and Flagler was going to get wrapped up in that. So there's some elements of that and how to comply with that permit moving forward, which we were able to also address during this project. So in the previous presentation, we talked about some of the elements of some of the research we did, but right, I'm going to focus on the two main things that we want to focus on today. One is the O and M and then later on the CIP is the actual projects. So with regard to O and M, there's some important considerations that we look through. Again, on a day-to-day basis, county staff is out there in the field making sure the drainage systems are working or the drainage systems that they have control or rights away for. And this is your channels, your canals, bridges, pipes, swales, ditches, other stormwater infrastructure, storm sewers and stormwater, and let's making sure they're and then they all need to be maintained on a regular basis to make sure that they can convey floodwaters. So day-to-day basis, there have people and equipment doing that. So it's very important that that is taken care of on a regular basis. Now, here, the current staff is funded, the staff that addresses stormwater is funded partially with the pot of money dedicated to the Road and Bridge Division. So a part of that is dedicated to stormwater. Out of the 24 staff in the Road and Bridge Division dedicated to O and M, seven are dedicated to stormwater. Some others are shared, some others are focused on the roadways. There's 20 pieces of equipment specifically dedicated for stormwater, backhoes, dump trucks, mowers, those type of things. But out of the budget dedicated to Road and Bridge Division, about 1.1 million is currently dedicated to stormwater. And the funding source of that is local gas tax funding. So that pot of money is shared throughout both the roadway and some dedicated to stormwater. Now, what we like to do in the master plan is take a holistic look at what's being done in the current maintenance frequencies and the opportunity to be proactive versus reactive in the maintenance that's being done. Currently, the county sits more in the reactive maintenance. And this means really kind of focused on addressing safety needs, responding to complaint-driven requests and concerns from citizens, maybe threats to property resulting from storms. But with the staff they have, being able to just be reactive to those issues as they're coming in or identified by staff. Now, that is in contrast to be proactive, which means trying to get ahead of things where you have the efforts or the resources, the people and equipment to go out there and do proactive inspection to kind of see and make sure things are working and maybe fix things through maintenance or lower-cost methods before they start to become a problem. And this is, you know, common that the staff and equipment are limited due to the funding and resources. So what all that is to say is during this stormwater master plan effort gives us the opportunity to look at what we call a gap analysis. We look at, well, what would a very proactive, forward-thinking program look like as far as the ability to go out and maintain and inspect and do the pre-work in a lot of these facilities on a regular basis to avoid some of the more costly problems down the road? Another flavor to that is the NPDS permit. The new permit with the state has certain requirements for inspection frequencies and maintenance and monitoring of these items as well. So it's kind of marrying, trying to also get the county, you know, in the shape and moving forward to comply with the NPDS permit as well. So, long story short, with the gap analysis, we assessed an ideal situation where everything is proactively done on an O and M basis and looked at the current situation and see, you know, where's a reasonable way I can get in the next, say, planning period, stormwater planning period of about 10 years and what that would take and what that would look like. Bottom line, we looked at about three additional staff dedicated to stormwater. That would bring the dedicated stormwater staff from 10 or from seven to 10. That will come along with some additional equipment, basically more of what you already have, more mowers, maybe more, another backhoe. Trucks will come along like that. But in order to do this effectively, you know, bridge that gap, so to speak, it equated to about 1.2 million in additional funding. So in addition to the 1.1 that's currently allocated, another 1.1 million, so 2.3 estimated as an annual expenditure to bring the O and M up next at higher level. So with regard to overall recommendations, we made, this is in the report, recommendations first is establish an annual budget for staffs dedicated to stormwater. It's a little difficult with it mixed together, the overall road and bridge, when you have the roads and the stormwater together to really isolate the accounting of what's dedicated to stormwater, which is a requirement of the NPDS permit, to really carve that out and be able to isolate those costs and maintenance frequencies. So a recommendation to dedicate a budget line end for that. Hire the additional maintenance staff with the other equipment. You know, it's an incremental process to ramp up to a good state of O and M. There's elements associated with tracking and the reporting and the paperwork that's kind of behind the scenes to address the O and M as well. So there's ideas of ways to improve and enhance. And again, a lot of that is for efficiency, but also to comply with that NPDS permit. So here, there's the 1.2 million identified in that gap, which added to the existing would approximate 2.3 million would allow for what we'd say a five-year recurring maintenance schedule on a zone-by-zone basis, which basically says a very organized way to circulate and get inspections on all the drainage infrastructure throughout the county that the county maintains within a five-year basis. In other words, look at every inlet canal drainage ditch on that rotation or more frequent to be able to, again, work towards that proactive level. Now, this improved inspection frequencies, again, as needed and in compliance with the NPDS permit, provide that proactive approach. And right now, again, reiterate that stormwater or the recurring funding right now is dependent on the local gas tax, but there are some other funding possibilities because 1.2 is a lot of, you know, million is a lot of money. So we had this in here that weigh a lot of municipalities, cities, counties throughout the state. Help to supplement that internally is with a stormwater utility fee or stormwater assessment, those type of things, as well as some other funding possibilities, which we'll get into a little bit deeper, a little bit later in the presentation. So there's identified, you know, a need and
Yes, sir. Question. So it's, you saying it's with a lot of municipalities, I guess, or counties that are in the utility business, which we're not, is that normally where you would allocate this funding from? So and is it a best practice to break out the stormwater maintenance staff, like to a separate department, take them out of Road and Bridge? Or they could be part of it, but just a subset of Road and Bridge?
Yeah, well, then the second question, organizationally, maybe things don't change. That's more out of convenience, but maybe a separate accounting. I mean, the dollars is a separate accounting line, particularly, I'm not necessarily accounting, so that would be other smart people figuring that out, but that would be a way to approach it. The utility, and we'll talk about this a little bit more, it, you know, if you were utility, you think of, you know, the service, you know, areas of wastewater water. What that essentially means is a user fee for the use of it. Most commonly, it, because it is easy to facilitate on a utility bill, say your water bill that's gone out to citizens, sometimes that's easier on a city basis. For counties, oftentimes, and it's more of an assessment that maybe goes on the tax roll, it's the same purpose, purpose for some dedicated funding, but just a different mechanism to, you know, recoup the funds from folks. So the utility bill or through a tax assessment, and that a lot of times depends on the locality.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Are this current facilities we have around the county, are we supported in the GIS system?
Yes, as far as reflecting those drainage facilities in our GIS system.
We can count them, we can go.
Yes, yes. And when we started the project, the county had started engaging in a pretty systematic way of doing inventory. We're able to use some resources during this project to really bolster that with the idea of trying to, you know, know the locations of all the drainage facilities.
Okay, well, good. Thank you.
So as far as the O and M, the next steps, we recommend in the plan, you know, implement the proactive O and M program and it'd be a gradual process of getting there. Really, identifying the funding for O and M is the big question there. You know, we just talked, Commissioner O'Brien, about the utilities or assessments as an option. There's also potentially external funding sources that can be bare, although those typically may be focused on certain projects rather than programs. But nevertheless, some options. Then a recommendation to develop and implement a comprehensive O and M plan. What that essentially means is furthering the paperwork and the tracking and the organization of how all this stuff happens on the stormwater program as far as the drainage infrastructure. And information has to be tracked. Again, a lot of that is to try to mirror this new NPDS permit that the county is engaged in, written standard operating procedures for things according to state standards. A lot of this to make sure permit compliance, check some boxes, but also enhance the program. In the master plan document, we proposed some certain inspection schedules for certain type of drainage assets that we recommend to follow that, again, to work towards the proactive inspection. Adopt the GIS-based work order and tracking system. Commissioner Hanson, as you're mentioning, to further that and develop that into a very effective tool for the county. And this last one is really important, conduct an easement needs study. Of course, the county maintains drainage infrastructure within the areas it has rights to, the right-of-way and where it has easements. There's some questions and some canals or drainage infrastructure that there's a question of whether it's in the county easement or not, or there may be an easement, and there's some question about whether it's drainage easement versus some other type of easement. So a study that looks into really nailing down where those areas in the county will help from an information standpoint to, for the folks to do their job.
Just on the, for instance, in the unincorporated part of the county, there are places where we use the Palm Coast Utility System. And then where I, sometimes they charge a stormwater fee as part of those fees. So I'm not sure if it's Palm Coast Utility supplying the water to a unincorporated county location, does, do they charge that stormwater fee to those people? And if they do, would that be a source of income for us instead of, you know, I'm just not sure how that works.
They're not charging unincorporated. At all? They wouldn't be charging unincorporated at all.
I know they've charged 25% extra
Right.
Fee for the water.
Correct.
And then some places, like where I live in Grand Haven, they don't charge a stormwater fee because that was the deal when they built Grand Haven, that we took care of on our own. So I was just wondering, are there any areas like that, that, that so there are no unincorporated areas that are being charged for a stormwater fee by anybody?
Shouldn't be.
Okay.
I've never seen one, so I'll just say that.
I was just wondering, you know. Yeah, I don't know. They do charge it in Palm Coast.
Commissioner O'Brien, did you? Mr. Dean?
In the unincorporated areas, the DRI, not all of the DRIs, but some of the DRIs charge stormwater as part of their assessments to their property owners to manage stormwater management.
Where does that money go?
It goes to the, yes, it goes to the community development, actually, I should have said Community Development District. Pardon me, it goes to the Community Development District.
Okay.
They plan, they operate, they build capacity, and those fees are used to defray those costs.
It would require an inter-local of some sort, right? For them to have charged us stormwater through their utility billing.
To have, when you say charged us?
I'm trying to answer Commissioner Sullivan's question about
They don't need an interlocal to assess a stormwater cost in their special assessments. The CDDs.
No, no, we're losing track.
Sorry.
We'll follow up.
Yeah.
I did have another question.
Yes, sir.
On the easements study, is that something that you would recommend or you would envision that gets done by a separate consultant or is that something that we can do in-house? Because and, you know, cost, what would it cost to do something like that?
It could be done in-house, depending on the resources that the county may have. Other municipalities have paid a consultant to do that. Essentially, it's a lot of record research, depending on whether, you know, you're going through paper files or electronic, you know, scans and trying to do it. Typically, it could be digitized and put into the GIS system, so it's very easy to, you know, maintain. So that would be decision in the county. As far as cost, depends on the amount of material, you know, we go through, so generally, you know, it wouldn't be terribly expensive, I don't think.
Seems to me it would be important if we were going to switch the focus from being reactive to proactive, because we wouldn't want to be, you know, showing up, starting to do work in particular areas and then find out we have an easement dispute. We had, I think we all know about a couple that we've had in the past that we wanted to do the work and then found out, you know, we didn't have a valid easement and the property owner wanted us to do the work, but we needed to make sure we got the easement done and that, that played things a very long time, so.
Yeah, and that clarity is useful because, you know, you'll get complaints for private citizens, they're flooding and they want the county to do something about it, but if you don't have the rights to do anything about it, it's difficult. Or if there's some question that could be about an easement or right-of-way, that can be frustrating for everybody. Okay, so shifting on now to the CIP considerations, and some of this we presented before back in the fall, so a little bit of a review to get to where we're going here today. When we talk about CIP considerations, we kind of wrap a lot up into, you know, a big, you know, ball of projects for consideration. As far as the master plan's recommendations, this could be recommendations for, you know, studies, like an easement study or further work in certain areas, but the bulk of it is turn the dirt projects to improve conditions in the county. Some of the things we consider a lot, there's a lot of talk about resiliency now. There's a vulnerability resiliency study being done by the Regional Planning Council right now for, you know, Flagler County. We reflected that to a certain degree on how it relates to stormwater under this study as well. So there's those projections of things to change in the future, whether sea level rise or other hydrologic conditions. We take that into account as well as the flooding issues and the water quality issues and put them all together to flavor the CIP recommendations into what's appropriate. A lot of the senses, we want to, again, look at that with respect to those future conditions, the vulnerabilities that may be identified and look at. You know, the typical process now is to recommend projects and we're just looking at existing conditions, but how will things perform in 10, 30 years if things, you know, go in a certain direction? Considering all those, we also took a look at what's happening as far as development of the county, where that's happening right now, where it's happening in the future or projected to. Roadway corridors, outfalls, a number of different things to make sense of a good CIP projects recommendation. There's also things happening in the future as far as maybe some development zones or environmentally sensitive areas that we got to take in account. And those things, again, considered, we're looking at CIP projects. Now, with regard to the particular recommendations, what we did is looking at all, you know, the items, we came up with a long list, as we call it, of about 60 project recommendations. And by long list, this was the brainstorming list of things to done that seemed viable to meet the needs. And those needs were categorized as far as these projects as, you know, addressing flood storage or attenuation, flooding basically, water quality treatment. There's a number of regulatory constraints on some of the waters like Crescent Lake and some of the creeks and in the association with the county. There's projects that may address both flood and water quality and get the benefit of a combination of those. Excuse me. Some projects to focus on conveyance where there's, say, a canal, that's, the conveyance is very important to minimize flooding in a certain area, but also it's a maintenance headache for the county, so there's a possibility to enhance that for not only flood protection, but also to reduce maintenance burden. Resilient aspects are considered, as we mentioned, and then we also took a look at what was currently on the books as far as CIPs, whether it be roadway projects or utility projects. If we're looking at something that benefits stormwater in an area where there's already going to be an improvement, potentially, there's the the opportunity to, you know, piggyback some efforts. So that's what we looked at as far as that. And again, a 60, approximately 60 projects in a long list. Now, what we had the opportunity to do in the scope is take the top 20 of those projects and do a more detailed conceptualization. Whereas the top 60 are ideas and good for long-term planning purposes, these are the projects we wanted to put some detail to and be able to get them ready to take the next step right after the master plan. Now, a couple of notes on these, they're all the types of projects that we talked about on the previous slide. We are focused on unincorporated areas because that's, you know, where it's funded here, but realizing stormwater doesn't necessarily stop at jurisdictional lines, so there is some, you know, influence back and forth with some of the cities. Want to consider a geographical distribution. There's, by that, I mean, not just recommend all the projects in the same area of the county, right? And spread things out to the districts and whatnot. But look at some other considerations that may throw, what I would say, a monkey wrench in the implementation of projects. Significant utility complex or special access or the need for significant land acquisition or those easements, as we talked before. There's struggles there with some projects. We took that into consideration. Maybe those were ranked a little lower in our prioritization. We did talk to the Water Management District about the permitability of projects. We don't want to recommend projects that you can't permit and implement. St. John's was gracious enough to review the master plan and provide us some comments that we reflected in the plan. There's potentially the opportunity to, again, coordinate with some of the local municipalities here or potentially DOT in the projects, depending on what's going on. But then really importantly, put some preliminary costs to this for budgeting purposes, looking forward. With that cost, because we're conceptual at this point, although we've sketched out what the improvements, you know, may look like and then some of the concept characteristics, there's a bit of contingency in there, but what we tried to take in account was any costs associated with not only the construction of it, but property acquisition right-of-way. Provide some estimates of what the design and permitting and construction oversight costs may be associated with the project. And take all that material and package each of those 20 projects into what we call a fact sheet style, where it's going to be easy for Richard or folks in the county to take those, you know, project by projects and then go the next steps. Now, here's where they, where they look like or where they are located. And again, I think we showed this back in the fall. This is the top 20 projects. In red on the map are the top 20 projects and they're labeled. And you'll see some numbers repeated in there in a couple of spots, what those are alternatives to address the same issue in the same area. There just might be two options. So it would be a one or the other, you know, for those. And then in yellow, you see that's the remainder of the 21 to 60 on the longer list. So you can see spread out in a good bit, but there are some concentrations in a couple of areas where you'd maybe expect. So top 20 projects, considering some of the alternatives, totaled just short of $70 million for a CIP program. That's what we have, based on the top 20. Now, we took that information and we looked at it on a 10-year CIP program for implementation. Can't all start these at once, right? You want to look at a planning period to move these out. Now, this is fairly aggressive, the idea of doing these 20 projects in 10 years, but this is, so this is a starting point. So we have here, you know, in yellow, you see the total cost of about just close to 70 millions over 10-year period with a little bit of ramp up in the first year as far as cost-wise, works out to between seven and eight million a year, as you'd imagine to do these projects. Now, you see the costs are staggered over several years because it takes a while to go through the design and permitting and then the construction process. You know, from two to four years for some of these, so. Now, one thing we wanted to hit on, which was good news, is the American Rescue Plan Act, the ARPA funding that the county has been fortunate to get. It's helped fund some other efforts in here, but just recently, I understand from talking with Richard and staff that identified 2.2 million that can be earmarked for stormwater-related projects and activities, and they are actively working to try to identify the best bang for the buck for that money. Now, so that's good news and to be able to maybe move or advance some of these things, you know, forward real quicker. Now, the funds must be obligated by the end of this year, just kind of earmarked in place and then expended by the end of calendar year 2026, so there's some time constraints on it. But it can be used for just about anything that was on the list of capital projects, designing, construction, any of the options we discussed, but also potentially earmarked to do some studies that may lead or help to the whole process of stormwater management. So for example, as we've been alluding to, maybe taking a detailed look at a thorough analysis of funding mechanisms for the projects. So that's related to the CIP, so jumping back, sorry, to the next steps for the CIP. So the next step is to, you know, after the close of this project, really implement the capital projects, right? Go down the road with putting things in there. Now, the biggest thing is to identify the funding for the capital projects, which is to be a combination of internal or external. That's what we look for, bringing money into the county that can be looked at, but also whether there's the possibilities of enhancing the internal funding as well. So there's some things listed that we'll talk a little bit more about, but obviously bringing money into the county from external sources is to your advantage. But things like fees or assessments or special assessments can be considered as well. Now, the capital projects, we did prioritize them and laid them out in that matrix for implementation, but we do realize that depending on the county priorities and there's some flexibility in how those would be implemented. need, depending on the county priorities and there's some flexibility in how those would be implemented. Uh, maybe a lot due to the availability of funding and where there's opportunities to partner with other localities within the county, that may, uh, impact, you know, prioritization a little bit as well. But generally from here and implementing the capital projects, uh, this will involve the following steps, just to make sure we're clear. Is first, you know, you all adopting the, the master plan, uh, here in, in soon in the future. And then kind of providing the, 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 uh, starting gun, right? For this. But look at, uh, for individual project, uh, many of the projects, some of them are very straightforward and go right to design, but some of them may require a preliminary design or feasibility analysis to just work out all the details of the viability and the constraints and the, the benefit of them. But then final design and permitting will happen. Some, most of them probably will require some type of permitting from St. John's or potentially the Army Corps. And then get through that period that may be 12 to 24 months, depending on the complexity, and then you go into construction. So again, as I alluded to before, from soup to nuts, uh, probably talking about, you know, a two to four-year period to implement. You know, eat one, uh, any one of those projects. Now, uh, we again laid everything's out in a 10-year, uh, program to start. Kind of have a goal, kind of a target, but again, that's flexible depending on funding because that's the big, big unknown. So if it may be completed in, in more than 10 years or in 20 years, that will to be seen. Now a little bit more about potential funding opportunities and I want to be specific. And in our scope of what we did, we looked at funding opportunities from the, uh, from the, uh, standpoint of identifying possibilities and what may be out there to reflect. Part of our scope was not to do the detailed economic analysis of actually marrying and, and, and all the funding and, uh, flushing them out and vetting them all to specific actions. So what you'll see here are some ideas of what's out there that we've seen other communities in Florida. But from a local, state and federal standpoint, from a local standpoint, uh, things that fund stormwater programs, a sales tax. Many counties have done a sales tax. I think you have an extra one that pays for school. Schools here, potentially in the county, a lot of people can rope in capital projects into that type of uh, situation, uh, stormer utility fee, which we, we've talked about a little bit. It's a common way for folks to dedicate funding to stormwater. Uh, millage allocation, that's another possibility or assessments. Um, municipal service taxing unit or benefit units or special assessments, those are on the table as possibilities as well. All of them have, you know, advantages and disadvantages, as you may well know. Now from the state and federal, a lot of grant opportunities, uh, traditionally a lot of water quality grants have come down. But more recently, uh, things on the flooding side, uh, so you have, you see things from the DEP or Water Management District, uh, community development block grants that a lot of times are, are done for more, you know, roadway or community projects, but they also may have a place in stormwater projects depending on how they go. Federal FEMA, you've been lucky with a lot of disaster assistance or mitigation type of grants, that's a possibility. Uh, US Geological Survey, Fish and Wildlife Survey, EPA, all some other options. So in the master plan, we enumerated kind of a menu of possibilities that can be considered to kind of narrow down what the next focus may be. And what we did, here's just an example, an excerpt from the report. We took the top 20 projects. Here's just the top eight. And we put together a matrix and kind of filled it out with the potential funding strategies that may be applicable. Again, trying to give a head start into the more detailed funding analysis, which would be done after the conclusion of this master plan. And, uh, like in the last column, uh, stormwater utility again, as we've, we've talked about briefly is a, you know, candidate that could cover uh, any of the types of projects that show up on the list. Now, so let's talk about stormwater utilities. We talked about having this in here, just to give you a little sense of, you know, who's doing it and what they are, what the funding is. We, uh, got some good data from the Florida Stormwater Association's Utility Survey. They survey everybody in the state. Do you have a stormor utility? How is it funded? What are the statistics, all the characteristics of it? So 170 of the 479 local governments in Florida have stormwater utilities. So it's very common. Very common. Um, and the average monthly stormwater fee is about $8, a little over $8. And that's to a typical, uh, single-family unit. I think, I think where I live, it's about $9, but but here in the table in the green is some of your neighbors or even Palm Coast that's within the county. Now this is based on 2022, so the numbers may have changed slightly. But, uh, you know, Palm Coast, monthly fee of 11, a little over 11, but Orman Beach, St. Augustine, Volusia, you know, your neighbors, you can see what the monthly fee is per a typical single-family residence in their jurisdiction. Uh, and if you look at number of resident, just residential accounts, there's some math in the last column is approximately what that may represent an annual, you know, fee, again, bringing in from these sources, from this source to do for stormwater. So. So how much, what could this mean to Flagler County? We just did a little back of the envelope math here in the blue box. If for some reason you charge a nominal fee of $6 a month to each of the approximate 11,000 residential parcels. And then that may be whether they're occupied or whether they're just a parcel that's out there that's residential. You know, that may generate close to 800, uh, thousand, uh, a month or annually. And that's just the residential parcels, typically commercial parcels and other type of parcels are also, you know, charged a fee. So this is not a, this is not a, uh, necessarily a suggestion or recommendation. This is a for your information type of thing, just a little bit about how these things are framed up in different areas of Florida. Now another area that I think is a real good opportunity is potential funding source from the resilient Florida funding. Now this is, you've heard a lot about the resiliency, the vulnerability studies that are going on between the master plan and the, and the work that's going on with the consultant for the regional planning council. County is checking the boxes to be eligible for resilient Florida funding in the future. So this can, this can, uh, really be applied to specific things. You think about coastal resiliency and hardening and whatnot, but really it can be applied and seen applied to essentially everything that could be stormwater related flooding, water quality. In essence, stormwater, uh, management is resilient by nature. There's just some examples, uh, some different counties, uh, and around some nearby of just some grand awards. And this is just a subset pulled out for, as an example, but in 2022, I think 400 million was, was, was thrown up by the DEP. Uh, there's the grand awards. Now sometimes there's a local match, uh, required, uh, sometimes not. St. Augustine got lucky, as you can see there. But with that local match, uh, dedicated funding needs to be there. So some of their funding source that the county may put up some money to get money. And I think you're probably very familiar with that in other instances, but quite a bit has been out there and that will continue, as far as we know, as far as we've tracked down, it'll continue on for quite some time. So in, in conclusion, wrapping everything up, uh, what are our overall recommendations? Well, first is to to adopt the, the stormwater master plan, um, that we presented today, which will be a, a next step after this meeting, I understand. And that will lead to adopting, implementing the, the, the elements of the plan that we included in the report and that we summarized today. Again, that includes a CIP program and project implementation, uh, completion of, of O and M activities like inventory, O and M enhancements, trying to get that proactive nature, but flood management, water quality, climate change. And also compliance with that NPDS permit, which remains more organizational, regulatory and, you know, process requirements onto the, the county staff. And all rolled up and had that, you know, down the road. Now this next one, number three, perform a dedicated stormwater CIP and O and M funding and revenue sources study. Big mouthful there, but that's what I alluded to. Whereas in this project, we kind of identified menu items for what may be applicable to go forward with these projects. The next step would be to get firm, higher firm, do the economics, the number crunching associated, which of those options really fits Flagler County to be able to start funding, uh, funding the stormwater projects or program or trying to enhance the efforts there. Now, and the idea of that would be determine the optimal revenue without undue burden on the taxpayers, right? Because we're talking about, you know, a lot of money. So what's the fair, fair to the county, fair to the taxpayers, fair to everybody? And trying to move this, move this forward. The last recommendation is revisit this plan every five years as things, uh, things do change. Now this isn't a recommendation to do this same level of effort every five years, but at least a nominal effort to look at what has changed, what new developments happen, some regulations that may have changed, reassess priorities and, you know, keep that, um, CIP, uh, matrix fresh in that, you know, moving forward. And that is where we're at, the, the recommendations in summary. And I think that, yeah, that is it. I thank you for listening to our story here this morning and would love, or it's actually this afternoon. See, I caught me. Um, and be glad to answer any further questions you may have.
Questions, Commissioner Sullivan?
Um, this is kind of, um, I don't know. Palm Coast, uh, and when ITT built Palm Coast, they put in a berm system to handle their, uh, stormwater, basically. And there's got to be a lot of lessons learned from that. It's in this area right here. And one of the lessons was that, you know, now, now it's beginning to cost them more and more money to maintain that system. They didn't put in underground utilities. They didn't do, um, sewers, uh, in, in that whole area. So are, are any of our recommendations as, as the unincorporated part of the county? Are, are there, are there, are we making recommendations as to when we do new developments? How to handle what they should look like when they're, when they're put in? Uh, I didn't say anything here that says, you know, that, that does that part of it, but it is part of the, the study recommendations to how we should regulate new developments in, in the unincorporated part of the county as far as stormwater goes.
Yeah, just certain saying, I went back to this slide, um, under number two. Uh, he's near the bottom, best management practices, implementation and that what that means is best management practices that are used to manage, manage stormwater. And we did have a, a chapter in the master plan that talked about, uh, the different types of infrastructure that are used and talked a lot about, you know, what you may hear these days about green infrastructure and low-impact development type of infrastructure, different ways to do, uh, you know, do, um, development.
Because what we're finding is if you don't do it upfront, coming back and fixing it 30 or 40 years later is impossible.
Well, we're pretty much demanding, uh, curb and gutter.
Yeah, you know, I mean, that's, that's an example, but, 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 uh, but I mean, I just was wondering if, if it's specific in coming out of this study, you know, reaffirming that or adding things and that kind of thing. That's all I'm saying. It's just, if you don't do it upfront. Yeah, uh, it's really hard to fix it later.
Yeah. And we didn't, uh, we're not in the plan dictate a particular method of development or stormwater management. That's again, for the, you know, the county to decide whether to provide some options and alternatives for consideration and, uh, but it is, uh, yeah, there's a balance between the curb and gutter. It's nice and neat. It really manages everything, usually gets it to a stormwater pond. And then there's alternative, uh, maybe more in the roar areas where you do have more open systems and swales and things that more have to, you know, rely on infiltration to come down. So it's a balance. So there's some advantages and disadvantages either way.
I just mean, we, we do have the example of Palm Coast and, 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 and the problems they're facing now.
Adam will correct me if I'm wrong, but through our comp plan process right now in the land development code, we are addressing and will be able to address stormwater as it pertains to new developments. And so not necessarily their scope in this, but with the comp plan and the land development code.
So, well, I, I, I mean, that's what I was trying to get at. This study right here doesn't really go after the
New development.
The new development part. Yeah. Okay.
Yes, sir. Commissioner O'Brien.
So, um, what I, and maybe I just didn't see it or didn't hear it. Um, I don't see a discussion of, um, risk i- in the ranking or in the, in the project list. I don't see any discussion of, of risk of you know, what we absolutely have to do and we need to do because we're at a lot of risk. And then also, you know, like when the Army Corps ranks projects, they do it based on, on, um, protecting property and the valuation of property. So I don't see any discussion in, in that project list of, you know, are the dollars that we're going to spend, you know, what's the value, what's the return we're going to get for protecting the, the value of property? Cause some of them might be in more rural areas. That's what it looked like, just really quick looking at it, at it or undeveloped areas. And some of them may be extremely critical and protect millions and millions of dollars of property. So I, I don't know if that's something I can be incorporated into the scope or that's, that's outside the scope of this project, but just wonder if you could talk about that a little bit.
Yeah. And, you know, risk can take many forms, um, flood risk, um, risk from, uh, hurricanes and storm surge and uh, risk to, uh, environmental aspects like water, you know, water quality, depending on that. Um, I will say we did factor in risk to the degree which we looked at the projects and what they would, uh, will help address. And some of that is flood risks, the flood prob, projects. Um, from the water quality standpoint, the risk is, uh, sometimes more of a future risk. So there's regulatory requirements on one of the lakes, like Crescent Lake, for example, and some of the main creeks, addressing the water quality to improve them. And as development continues and, and maybe put some more stresses on the water quality to be able to address that future risk. Another element that we did with, uh, part of the scope on the resiliency side is we did look, uh, I had a chapter that looked at, uh, you know, future vulnerability where we looked at some of the, the storm surge and then the, the flooding things then mapped out on a, on a cursory basis, some of the more susceptible facilities that may be potentially easily inundated with, uh, even a nominal projection of sea level rise or for some of those coastal areas. And that was a risk-based analysis where we looked at give the county a basic list. Okay, here, here's some vulnerable, you know, structures and when the opportunities, um, I present themselves to potentially do some upgrades or with other projects to enhance or improve those. That would be a way to address, rest, address that.
The, the other thing that struck me is of, of being extremely important is that, is the inter-local planning and agreements. Um, you know, I think, again, I think about the city of Palm Coast and, uh, especially with all the new development that they want to plan to the west. Well, right now, if I'm not mistaken, almost all of the city of Palm Coast's water drains east and south. And, and to the extent that if they're going to go jump 95, excuse me, the, the railroad tracks and go west, somehow they got to keep that water on that side because we can't have it flowing back down through, you know, through, through Palm Coast.
We, we have a natural divide that goes right through the county just to the west of one. And it makes everything flow to the west. Naturally.
Bowl, right?
Yeah, we have, uh, part of the county flows east to the intercoastal and majority of the county flows west. And there's a divide. Um, you can see it if you look at the elevation. We had to study it. We were trying to figure out you know, how to prevent flooding over in the hammock area. So, um, you know, if we do things right, that'll take care of itself, but it flows west from, for about a two-thirds of the county flows west.
Yeah, okay. Well, uh.
Yeah, and I will say Not totally. I mean, the one I think
I've got a map.
Yeah. The, uh, the little mill, the old revolutionary mill there, that, that's not, that is west of one and 95. And there's a little stream in there that works its way back. No, it comes around and goes back into, to Prince's place. So there, there, that's a little piece though, you know, up there where Pelletier Creek is. They've already destroyed the mill, so wait on that.
Well, I always just add, uh, to more answer your question, Commissioner O'Brien is, um, yeah, that's something that always needs to be looked at with future development with changes. Um, typically with the permitting that's, uh, through the, the county, the water management district in particular. Um, where, where a current site is undeveloped state discharges or which way it goes in essence, has to be maintained when it's developed as well. And others, mitigation such as the stormwater ponds and, and things, but it's, uh, a very difficult and challenging and maybe near impossible something to make, you know, water that used to go east to go west and impact. So the point I'm making there is through the permitting process, there's the mechanisms to, to, to mitigate those types of issues that, that may happen. Now. Is it a perfect, perfect world? You know, probably not, but I think the, uh, the ability of everybody to stay educated on those type of issues helps to make sure, you know, problems don't happen in the future.
Oh, Mr. Pangin.
Question to Commissioner O'Brien's point. So there is a lot of development in the future in the west. And then there's a lot of development on the backside of other counties. Putnam, all that. Um, so this is maybe a naive question. So we're all going to what drain into Crescent? St. John's River, all of this, this, this planning points it all that way, right? To those rivers to?
Yeah, significant part of the county goes to Crescent Lake, which is essentially directly connected to the river.
Yeah, so.
And everybody else is draining there too, right?
Everyone is draining there and it's almost pushing back in. And so these projects in theory would alleviate or we assume they would alleviate what's pushing back in. Cause there's only so many bodies of water we can drain to in the west. And, um, and one of them, like Pelletier is one of the cleanest bodies of water left in the state of Florida. So then, but I noticed, um, the people that live out on Crescent Lake are saying they're, they're, they're losing land. Like the water's coming in higher on them now in storm events. But that's the only option we have, right? Is to, we can't pump back to the east into the ocean.
Yeah. And that goes back to what I was saying before, you know, if it, if it's gone to the east, if it, if it goes to the west now, it has a, has still has a right to go to the west somehow. It's just a. to the west somehow, it's just a, how do you manage it?
Yeah, because that's, I think, really something we have to think about with our municipalities is how, you know, how much are we draining out into that area? But also to Commissioner O'Brien's point, you had the top projects as areas that we don't have any residents really, Rema Ridge. So there's some capability to, to move those around always, right? Like if we say, well, we'd rather look at more denser populations, higher valuing, you know, property impacted by flooding.
Yeah, yeah.
This project, because these projects are movable from that standpoint.
There's that flexibility. I would say for that particular one, there's already some, some actions in place to move forward to do some improvements in the Rema Ridge area. So one of the priorities that led to that one being a little higher was kind of the piggyback aspect of it. If you do some of the improvements we're talking about, you can do a lot cheaper and more effectively when there's already some other stuff going on so that, for that particular area, that can arose it to the top.
Right, so just once the plan is implemented, we can move projects as, you know, based on more need necessity, population, property value, life, all that, right? That's what we're saying, it's just an implement thing, right? And then, then finally, and I don't want to jump ahead, but on the stormwater utility fee that you were talking about, those are like credits, how do you calculate that basically on the impervious area of the, of the developed property or just undeveloped land or?
Well, and I'll give you the, the, in, in the, the simple thing in my mind, because it gets a little bit out of my expertise, I've dealt with them before, but essentially it's the common way that they're done, either utilities or assessments is on an impervious area basis. With the idea that, well, impervious areas would start, which generates more runoff from a development, right? Versus the undeveloped land. So typically what happens is, is they will come in and develop what's, you know, considered as an equivalent residential unit, in other words, a typical single family house, and that's a certain square footage of, of impervious area, say 2,000 feet or whatever it is. And then that's used kind of as the basis and then, you know, either, either all homes or build that same, you know, ERU, but then that is used, that equivalent residential unit is used to figure out what the, how to charge commercial properties. In other words, a strip mall or a shopping center, you know, if it has 10,000 square feet, well, that would be, if I'm doing my math right, that would be five times a regular ERU, so their fee would be five times what the, this charge of the house. But it all comes back to the previous area, but there are, you know, finer points about, you know, charging a developed property versus undeveloped property, that's depending on the billing, you know, cycle, who gets charged. In some places, schools and religious institutions are exempt, sometimes they're not, so it's, there's a lot of
Yeah, so there's like a calculation to it, right? So you've got credits and, so not everybody's going to pay the same. You can set it that way, you can say, well, you know, the undeveloped is more or the commercial is less because they have a larger impervious area and you can calc it that way.
Yeah, there's attempts to apply it fairly.
Smaller square footage gets less charged, stuff like that.
Yeah, and it's supposed to be the, the, the charge is proportional to the benefit that that property gets from the, from the service, which could be a benefit to their property. Yeah, yeah, benefit to their property specifically, like say, you know, their property doesn't flood, but it's also a general benefit too, because they want roads that are flood-free as they go around town to work or, or shopping or something too. So there's a general benefit as well as a specific benefit that can be.
Just one.
Sure, Commissioner Sullivan.
Yeah, and I think we've already discussed it, but as of right now, just so I'm clear, in the unincorporated areas of Flagler County, there is no stormwater management fee charged on a monthly basis. None.
Unless, unless
Other than the, are, other than community development districts that may be including those costs within their annual assessments.
But that doesn't come to the county, that money?
That money does not come to the county, that's correct.
So no money coming to the county in the unincorporated area for stormwater management fees, okay.
Commissioner O'Brien.
So, if, in a perfect world, if, if we had unlimited funds and we can be proactive and maintain the whole system the way it should be, and we, we're on a five-year plan, zone, you know, going zone to zone and doing our, doing our work, is the system good enough as built, you know, the way it is now? If we went into just complete maintenance mode, or do we have major holes in the system itself and we have major infrastructure investments that we're going to have to make to, to build the system out or fix it?
Yeah, good question, and we may have touched on the presentation last fall, but not today. We did, we did a couple of things. We, we looked at what is being maintained and how effective that is, you know, being done, but we also did a cursory level of service analysis. And that means we did some calculations and did some computer models on a more regional basis to determine where are some stress points in the overall flood system. And that did identify some locations where there's potentially some culverts that are undersized or a bridge location that may be undersized, that all interact with some of the, the channels or maybe a particular ditch that really could be, be widened if, if possible. So there was a combination of looking at not only things from a maintenance side, but from a deficiency, you know, side as far as level service. So there is in some of those capital improvement projects, but also some specific location recommendations that we had in there to look at some of those capacity issues with the infrastructure.
Because like the city of Palm Coast, that's master planned out, you know, so, I mean, they may have maintenance issues and breakdown issues, but it's still a system that was built, you know, holistically, if you will. And with, with the county being unincorporated and, you know, parcels of developments and, you know, pieces just put together over time, over many, many years, I, I just worry about the holistic view of it all.
Well, example, Don, is the Marineland Acres, which is nothing. Costs us $28 million to fix that.
Yes.
And that's just one community.
Yes.
Yeah.
That was kind of my point, but
It's a good point, I mean, yeah.
If you build something and you don't take that into consideration, and when you come back and try to fix it, that's the point.
Yeah, well, I think we're, we're doing a good job of not letting something being built without consideration for stormwater.
Even a bigger, you know, this is helpful, you know, look at it as a whole.
Well, and I would say holistically is, is, is the approach, because for example, as you all well know, a lot of the development, you know, in the past decades in Florida has been very piecemeal. You know, they come in and put something here and there and here, but don't really consider what's going on around as much. So one benefit of the master plan is we did do some analysis against some of that computer modeling analysis and hydraulic calculations on the, the county as a whole. So that that can be used as a tool to do some what-ifs. So a lot of times, you know, if the development or somebody comes in and says, I want to do this here, do you have the information or the tool to be able to say, well, is that going to cause a problem or not? Maybe it's okay, maybe it's not. But if you don't know, if you don't have the tools or information to be able to start evaluating that and see how it may, you know, affect other things, then that is, you know, it's an advantage to be able to have that information. And this, this provides, provided a foundation to be able to start to fill in that information a little bit better for you.
Anything else? All right, let me get to my list. All right, I'm waiting for everybody to get through theirs. Did you identify all the different grant opportunities that are available to us right now through the state of Florida? I know we've all been in different webinars or classes that have talked about the resiliency Florida program and the amount of money that's available, but other areas, will we be able to, following this, go research, I think, things that you've identified for us that are potential sources of income or, or revenue?
Yeah, and we attempted to, like I said, put together that menu of options, do some research, try to pull from everywhere available, both state, federal, you know, local, and provide those ideas that can be then, you know, moved forward on to look. So I think the simple answer to your question is yes, we attempted to try to pull in and identify all those types of sources.
So one thing is the grant scale, understand that there's different opportunities, state, local, federal, and you've attempted to identify, I want a list. I want to know exactly which agency we go refer to and call to, I want to know what the grant is called and, and how it applies to our list of 20 projects. That's what I want to see, because we need, we need to be able to have a more detailed follow-through on, on grant opportunities.
Yeah, yeah, no, definitely. And this, this slide kind of captured a lot or some of that information, put some names with things, but there's more detailed information in, in the chapter. We have a chapter on, on funding in the, in the master plan that, you know, provides that laundry list.
Right, and some won't be eligible for resiliency funding, but they'll be eligible for something else. So we should be able to identify the top 20 and which grants they can be applied to.
Yeah, that, that is the idea.
And specifically to Commissioner O'Brien's question, do the, do the CIP projects identify exactly what they are fixing? So has a problem been identified with each of the CIP projects so that we know there's been a history of flooding in an area and this project is, is fixing that? Or are we, have we identified a potential problem? Because that would identify in my mind how we prioritize them. If there's a culvert that is undersized, but we haven't received complaints yet, that one may not be prioritized as high up the list.
Yes, yes, so what we do is we take what I would say as a lines of evidence approach, not just looking at a one factor to identify a prioritization of the projects, but look at multiple factors. One is talking with staff, where, where have you seen the problems, where you have the headaches and known or seen flooding for the storms? We had some good data the county provided from Hurricane Ian, for example, and where they got the complaints of flooding, we're able to look at those. That was one tool, is just the information, because, yeah, you're exactly right, we don't want to just come up with a project that we think is a problem, but it's not really a problem. Or at least, you know, nobody has seen a problem there, right? But that's one line of evidence, another line of evidence is some of the analysis that we did, the calculations, like when we're talking about the, you know, piece of infrastructure that appear to be undersized, you know, kind of system analysis that fed into it. So some of those, a lot of those coincided with these areas that were already identified as flooding, that was another line of evidence. And then the, some of the, the vulnerability, resiliency preliminary stuff we looked at as far as, you know, potential future impacts of some of these systems, that was factored in. So several factors went into considering, say, for example, a flooding project, you know, how, you know, how real and important it was and definitely factored into the, the ranking. And then what we also did is we looked at benefit cost analysis of each of the, the projects, you know, what is the benefit versus, you know, the cost of the project? Obviously, we costed out, you know, what they would be, you know, $1 million, $2 million, but we looked at what is the benefit? For example, on one extreme side, if it, project benefits just one homeowner, that's, doesn't have a high benefit cost, but many of them, particularly if it's an area that is fed with a large contributing area, could have, you know, 10, 20, 25 properties that are benefit or portions of the city facilities that are maintained. So that's, was factored in as well from a benefit cost standpoint that also, you know, worked into the prioritization.
We also touched on, on where, how the county drains, but if, do we have a map? Have you identified the different drainage basins? And are there, is there a small number of actual basins or is there a lot of little ones that you've identified? And have we identified which structure or which CIP, have we identified them per basin? So that we also know within a geographical basin area, how much money is being allocated to that basin? Because that could go to special assessments as well.
Yeah, yeah, and so one of the, when we're developing our hydrologic and hydraulic analysis or computer evaluation of the main drainage ways, we delineated basins on both a, a major basis, you know, like Little Hall Creek or, or Crescent Lake or, you know, Bulow Creek, you know, the areas that, in the unincorporated areas, well, actually the whole county really, the, those basins so that they can be, you know, looked at both in several different geographical ways, from a drainage basin standpoint or from a jurisdictional standpoint certainly, or from a, you know, even district, you know, standpoint. So all that information is, is in the, in the data and in the mapping that we have and that we're, you know, providing as part of our deliverables, not just a report, but all of our data, most of it in GIS format, that shows all these geographical relationships to the, the projects and the different characteristics.
So it would be easy, Richard, to identify the CIP projects per basin? You've identified, we labeled the basins or are they just shown on a map?
As the capital improvement project list, the way that they're presented in the report, we don't have them, a basin like in a, in a setting towards we assign it for the project, but it'd be easy for us to fish that out of the information they provided to us. But they did provide us with basin maps, not just with large basins that cover like Old Hall Creek, but also they have these sub-basins that divide the areas within the county. So for us to identify or look at like, say, Rema Ridge and look at the, the basins that they've carved out, we can't identify or tag those projects to those basins in there. It would be something we could do.
Okay, great. Did, did this study look at water quality issues so we know areas where we have, we need to improve water quality?
Yeah, we had, there's a couple of things on the water quality end, there's the state regulations, the impaired waters program, and there's a number of waters identified as impaired by the state. Crescent Lake is one for some certain parameters and some of the creeks. So we looked at that, mapped those out, put down some recommendations on how to address those to keep them from degrading further or improving them, hopefully. And a number of the CIP projects were focused on water quality to achieve that end. And then there is, there was also a nod to water quality more on the site development standpoint, as I mentioned before, there's some recommendations of ideas on how to approach stormwater management from a green infrastructure or low impact development standpoint that, you know, may help kind of water quality in the micro basis, you could say. So both from a large macro basis and then micro basis as well.
And to the point of the, of the basins, the importance of the regional councils look at regionalized resiliency is that water doesn't know boundaries, underground aquifers or even stormwater and basin, drainage basins are, they go wherever where gravity tells them to go. So it's important to look at, at, and on the edges too, to see if there's other outlying influences into the county that are outside of our boundary. Is there anything similar to what I would call stormwater concurrency to where, Adam's probably looking at me sideways now, but in, in new development, if, if these developments are discharging into impaired bodies or, or flood-prone areas already, is there, is there a way for us to capture improvements that you've identified in the CIP on the development side?
The, I would say from the master plan standpoint, we provided information to be able to help those decisions. For example, on a, on a development basis, like we mentioned before, the example of having, being armed with enough information to be able to say whether this may have, you know, some unintended impacts or there's concurrency issues between, you know, developments or your neighboring county or whatnot. So that is something that the, the information in the master plan can help those particular decisions.
I think what we're faced with is as developments go in, and especially over time, none of it's usually seen immediately, but over time, the side effects, which can show themselves up in drain, in flooding issues or drainage issues elsewhere in the basin. But just thinking out loud or thinking to myself, if, if through this process, right, we've identified issues from a, a large scale, when we get to individual site planning, those are, those are, this knowledge now can help us with that potential future issues, address them now instead of retroactively.
Yeah, and I will say there are many communities that use information such like this, like for example, there's a known flooding problem area. So if there's another, something that's happening in the development that coming into the area that may be contributing to already known flood problem, maybe there's some extra criteria or hoops they need to jump through as far as their development and how they build things to help mitigate that.
Extra capacity in their retention system or filtration and, or the green infrastructure that you noticed. So those are things we could even as overlays potentially look at in the comp plan.
Would you get that at a technical review time with the new development? Is that like marrying, matching it back up to this?
Yeah, I think it would be based on where it's located within the master plan and, and being able to match it up through hydraulics to see if it affects it.
Yeah.
And on the water quality side, it's also becoming more common where communities, counties, cities are involved with, that have impaired waters, that they may even require to go above and beyond, say, the water management district requirements or constraints to, for water quality and extra treatment as well to, to help, you know, mitigate water quality issues as well. So that is, that is, there's precedent throughout the state for those kind of things.
All right, I think that does it for me, unless I generated other questions.
You know, did you do a 5,000-foot level looking at the county and saying, okay, this is where, just we don't do anything, this is where water flows?
Yes.
Just kind of naturally where water flows? We've done that in South County, like, everything flows from, uh, south to west, from Volusia County into our, into our county down there, which is causing a lot of problems. So I was just kind of wondering if you, you've done that, so we have that, we can look at that? Okay, great.
Yeah, we did a pretty detailed mapping of, uh, conveyance, and where, where things flow back and forth.
Just naturally, without messing around with it.
Naturally, and based on the, the, uh, drainage infrastructure that's.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else with questions? No? Madam, do you have any questions? They're gonna come. Mr. Hadeed, anything?
I think there are steps that you can take now, and I don't mean today, ahead of this, in conjunction with it, where you can mitigate for the stormwater risks that you presently face, and that is, you uttered the word overlay. Mr. Hanson knows well, I think Mr. O'Brien knows well, Mr. Sullivan as well, about the use of the overlay zoning district that we created for Marineland Acres, when it had no stormwater system. And as the, that subdivision developed, stormwater problems became far more aggravated, because there was no mitigation to the increase in stormwater volumes, or in how the stormwater is treated. So you had volume problems, and you had water quality problems, and both are very bad things to have in this regulatory environment that we're in. So we enacted an overlay ordinance, and I don't know the exact year, um, Adam is gonna know, we actually tried to get that enacted in the early 90s, but it failed, because people didn't understand an overlay zoning district. It is now a well-understood concept, and for instance, in Marineland Acres, just as an example, we knew there wasn't a stormwater system, but things were getting worse every time somebody built, so what did we do? We limited the amount of fill, we reduced the amount of impervious land that they could have, um, they got, uh, it got changed from 75% to 10%. Our engineering started, departments started requiring stem balls, there were limitations on the amount of fill, remember, we don't have real limitations on the amount of fill, we have what you have to minimally do, but people go beyond that. Marineland Acres, we capped that. We gave credits for maintaining natural vegetation, because that's an area where water is absorbed, stormwater is absorbed. We required owners to build swales and to maintain them, to have a, um, an affirmative obligation to maintain those swales. So if those swales, I don't know, were filling up, or they did something to alter them, we could, I don't know if we ever had to do that, but we could theoretically go back in there, and it worked. So in other words, a mitigation measure, you could take the backbone of that and look at it, and enact it for all those subdivisions where there are still buildable lots, but there are no established stormwater systems. So at least you're addressing and attempting to mitigate the size of the problem that you're facing, and particularly, the problem is gonna be water quality, it's gonna be volume, but it's also gonna be water quality. Uh, and given the fact that along that coast, along that, uh, that margin on the intercoastal waterway is federally recognized, state-protected, so there's gonna be heightened scrutiny whenever there's degradation of that water quality. Now, we would have to modify that overlay district, because it was sized based on, or scaled based on the size of the lots in Marineland Acres. So we've got a number of subdivisions that are, you know, not the, you know, the, they're not 75-foot widths, they're 50-foot widths, so we have to maybe tailor what we're doing, but we can take the step to mitigate the, uh, volume and degradation caused by stormwater. I think it would be very valuable too, because it signals to the public that we're gonna start getting serious about stormwater. You're gonna unveil this plan, and it's gonna, I don't know how it might be received, it's very significant costs, very significant impacts, but in the long term, incredibly positive, and obviously you are going to, I, I hope you adopt this plan, I assume you will, um, how you roll it out is gonna be very critical, public support for it is gonna be very critical, because that's gonna help, as you know, in grant, uh, acquiring grants. Obviously, the opportunities for inter-local cooperation are incredible. The problems, for instance, at Crescent Lake, they just scream for, uh, coordination between Putnam and Flagler and any other jurisdiction, Crescent City, any jurisdiction that is impacting it, otherwise, we're gonna get into a problem, not just in water volume, but again, in water quality, and they're gonna be very expensive to fix, and the local, the local governments are gonna bear the brunt of the remedies, that's the thing you gotta remember. Failure on this score imposes the responsibilities on the local government to correct. So that's what I, I would add. And then to adopt development standards going forward, that continue to treat stormwater as a serious matter, that we go in and look at how projects are being planned on a stormwater basis. We've been frustrated, this, I've heard the frustration of the board a number of times, and I mean, I'm not there, I don't do retail politics like you guys, that's not my realm, but I know you've heard from people who are very upset at the way stormwater is occurring in the more suburbanized areas, let's say, well, and even in the more Rema Ridge, you know, you're gonna, you're, you hear complaints from there, and, um, we need to, Rema Ridge, a perfect area where an overlay district could abate the volume of stormwater that we have to treat.
Thank you, sir, appreciate it. Anything else from us? All done, all right. Any final comments, questions? Okay, um, so for us, you need, uh, will this be, the plan itself be on a future agenda for adoption, and we'll continue to discuss the funding options, uh, because we've got lots of different programs, uh, between parks and the master plan of that, that we have to look at, the beach, re-nourishment, lots of, lots of things that all tie together.
Yes, sir, this will be coming back to you at your next meeting, um, the, I guess, more critical portion is the remaining ARPA funds that are currently designated for stormwater, um, getting a commitment from the board that you would like to continue to see that funding stay in stormwater, so that we can report back to the state, it has to be obligated by the end of this year.
Right.
And spent, I believe, by 2026, um, so it's just imperative that we stay on that track.
I, I would like to see the project schedule for these, to make sure that we, and, and I'm sure everybody, I don't want to speak for everybody, but that we get it done in time. We have to have projects that can meet the schedule.
And you also have limited, uh, usage of that funding, so it can only be applied to certain, um, activities, stormwater being one of them.
Right.
So you will see this at your next meeting.
I mean, we've got plenty of needs, I guess it would be how those, how a project that can meet our schedule applies to our ranking.
That's right. The, uh, if, if we're gonna adopt this plan at a next, at a future meeting, um, assuming that the, the, um, the projects that are identified, the ranking is not, that's not, um, that's something that we can look at in the future, that it's not just one approval, and that's the way it's gonna stay, because I don't know if we've had enough discussion about that part of it.
Yeah, we can always, we treat, all right, our other DOT lists all on a yearly basis, I don't know why this couldn't come back to us yearly.
Well, we also have, we can operate and execute these programs, or these projects at our discretion as well, we're not fixed into the ranking as it is seen fit, our consultant helped us develop, uh, through their analysis, um, and their review of risk, and other plotting, those other measures, just to give us, um, a set number for us to just kind of focus on, for us to develop the program, so that we can carry it into action, and then implement it later. So i- it will be incumbent upon us to ultimately determine the, the order of how we want to execute it, and a lot of that's gonna also depend on how, what funding we have available to execute the, the project on the list, some, some projects further down the list, we may be able to acquire or, or win grants for them so that they can be executed right away, that may be at rank number eight, whereas we don't have the other funding for the other ones in order, so, um, there's flexibility in terms of how we implement the program.
All right, thank you, appreciate it, thank you for your time.
Right, thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioners.
All right, this time we'll open up the floor for public comment on the presentation that we just heard. All right, seeing no one approaching, we'll close public comment, and is there anything else you need from us? No, motion to adjourn?
Move, we adjourn.
And a second by Commissioner Sullivan, thank you, appreciate it, thank you everybody for coming.